This is the City Council and I come to order, the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask one of our youth in government students to come forward and lead the invocation, Mario Jackson. If you'll please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Could we all bow our heads? Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for what you've done for us. Lord, we ask you to let, give this council some serenity to do what is proper and necessary. And, Lord, we ask you to let them have a peaceful council meeting in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education and Recreation Committee meetings.
So moved.
Third session and council meeting on April 17th.
I still move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April 13th through the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation to Mayor.
The first one I have is, is Matthew Schroeder here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I have a proclamation here. Whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, the motorcycle is an energy efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic, and parking congestion. The motorcycle is also important form of transportation by commuting, touring, and recreation. As a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle these vehicles on roadways. Over the past 10 years, motorcycle fatalities have increased 150 percent as reported in the United States Department of Transportation's Fatality Analysis Report. To prevent injuries and deaths on the roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone. Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stromer and Gattin, the Mayor of the City of Gaston, to hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Gaston and ask everyone to abide and drive safely. This is the, you're the State Director of the Dixie Abate Chapter of Alabama, is that right? Would you like to say a few words?
All right.
I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City of Gaston for proclaiming this. This is our second year we've had this proclamation and I'd just like to thank you. There's not anyone here to accept this, but I was asked to read it. Whereas alienating behaviors are often found in high conflict divorce and custody situations, speaking negatively about a parent or two in front of a child, interfering with communication and visitation, and discussing inappropriate information with a child such as details of separation, court proceedings, financial matters, or behaviors that can only destroy the bond between a loving parent and a child, but can cause a child mental and emotional harm. Parental alienation takes advantage of the impressionable and dependent nature of children. Parental alienation deprives children of their right to love and be loved by both parents. Parental alienation is considered harmful to children as alienation tactics are confusing, frightening, and rob children of their sense of security. Professionals agree that the problem of parental alienation is damaging to children and can affect them into adulthood with tragic consequences. There are more than 2.4 million divorced North Americans and in 2010, there were more than 21,000 divorced Alabamians, including the parents of more than 1 million children under the age of 18. With nearly as many unmarried couples in 2010, there were more than 25,000 unwed births with children separating. The awareness, with awareness comes education and understanding and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children caught in the crossfire of the people they love. Dear friends, so God so loves us, we also ought to love one another. Love does not harm, does no harm to its neighbor, therefore, love is the fulfillment of law. This year organizers are doing something special by asking everyone to take 10 minutes out of their day at noon on April 25th, anywhere in the state, and blow soap bubbles representing love. Therefore, I, Stromer and Gattin, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim April 22nd through 28th as Parental Alienation Prevention Week in the City of Gaston. Could I go ahead and announce about cleanup while I'm up here? I want to make sure everybody hears me. Saturday is our annual cleanup day. We'll be meeting here at City Hall. We'll have several volunteer groups that are going to be volunteering and we're asking all the neighborhood watch groups to get together and clean up their neighborhoods. If you don't belong to a neighborhood watch group and there's several of you in a couple of blocks, get together. We have trash bags, you can contact Public Works and get free trash bags. And we'll have the competition again with the elementary schools, the school that brings the most trash, not garbage, to school. We have the trucks that will be located there at the rec centers at the different schools. We'll have one at Carver Community Center, East Gaston Community Center, Elliott Community Center, Jack Gaston Coliseum on Megan, the Mitchell Community Center, Moritz Gloucester Amphitheater, Raymond Hill Community Center, the Senior Activities Center, and Walnut Park Community Center. And, you know, we've really done a lot of cleanup in the last few years, but we really, we never do have a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of conversations sometime, but when it gets time to show up, we don't have a lot of people show up. And if you don't come down here to volunteer and be assigned somewhere, you can still get some friends and neighbors or relatives in your neighborhood to, or different groups, to work on a couple of blocks in your neighborhood. But let's try to have a big cleanup day this Saturday. Maybe the weather will be cooperating and it'll help us keep the city clean. Thanks.
Unfinished business. A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 424 North 24th Street in District 6. This nuisance has been abated by the owner and no further action is necessary. Nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3203 for small tools and equipment. The NEAPA as the purchasing northeast Alabama coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Alabama Contractors and Equipment Company an amount of $20,045.2. The Chairman entertained a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
You know, we get copies of these bids and I noticed that several people did not include a bid bond. Do we know why, why the discrepancy there? Half of them did, half of them didn't. Is it clear that they need to include one or what? Somebody can help us with that, purchasing or Greg just left? Well, not only Greg, but City Clerk, do they have an excuse as to why they don't have bid bonds or do they miss it or what?
They apparently just miss it because if a bid bond is required, it is stated in the bid documents.
And it's clear? I just wonder why people would turn one in and not have a bid bond when it's very clear in there that you have to have, half of them did, half of them didn't. So I thought maybe they missed something. Okay.
All right. This is for a mower.
Yeah, I know. I'm just wondering why half of them turned in bonds and half didn't, unless they didn't know, they should have known. Somebody should have, you know. Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items to bring up under new business. The first of which is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston and Alda as to we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this is essentially the cooperative transfer of ownership from the city to, I'm sorry, from Alda to the city of the existing 2 mile 411 corridor beginning on or near Tidmore Ben Road. And this is in conjunction with the bypass construction activity that's taking place there in North Gaston.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance here. Sorry, I need that ordered.
Probably the water works, is that what you got?
This is the, the ordinance amending the budget, but I'm missing the
Resolution.
The resolution.
Yeah.
So we have a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $20,000 for, from the Etowah County Community Development Board to be moved for improvements at Hughley Park, make a motion that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, this is a $20,000 grant, earmarked for improvements to Hughley Park in East Gaston.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the next one is the ordinance amending the budget to account for this $20,000 grant, ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, and just for the young people in the audience today, anytime we receive monies into the city, we have to amend our budget. So there's generally a resolution capturing those monies and then an ordinance amending the budget to receive those monies.
This is from the one cent county tax that was put on years ago and if you remember, that was the tax that was supposed to have gone off in a few years. Like all taxes, it never goes away. It's still there.
It's not quite right. Hopefully one day if we have to put one on to go off, it'll go off.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And I have one final item, this is a resolution appointing a member to the Water Works and Sewer Board, make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this is kind of bittersweet for me. The, the individual that's being replaced is, is a well-regarded individual. Ms. Pady served the board for about two and a half terms, I think. And so, so this is an opportunity for us to, to, to assign a new individual to the Water Works and Sewer Board. This individual's name is Harold Kimball and I think, you know, Ms. Pady served us well in the past and Mr. Kimball will serve us well going forward, so.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take?
We, we all have a appointment on the water board. There's, there's seven of us and all of us have an appointment, so this is Debrick's choice and we certainly support his decision.
I think for the benefit of the students too, we talked about, particularly the council students, they, we talked up to them earlier. The City of Gaston back in the heydays, back in the old days, as they say, had a mayor and two commissioners. Most of our committees were made up of five individuals and those, three people appointed those five individuals. When we went to the mayor council formal government in 1986, the council took the position that we wanted to expand all the boards that we had control over to seven members, giving each council person an opportunity to appoint someone to those boards, thus diversifying those boards even more. Because prior to 1986, like I said, we had a mayor and two commissioners and at one time, in several terms, the commissioners lived within a block or two of each other. So quite naturally, all their friends who lived around in their neighborhood was appointed to all the boards primarily. And so now we've got a diverse board, comes from across the town, I mean, across the entire city. So that's why we have multiples of sevens on all the boards that we have an opportunity to appoint. Just a little history.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. The first one is a resolution authorizing agreement with the YMCA for the, for the conducting business at the Sixth Street Pool.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is, this, this gives the city, this gives YMCA complete authority to, to manage the Sixth Street Sewer Pool, seeing as how the liability that's, I stated that they have coverage of liability and the cost for having proper lifeguards in place and we're just extending that, that task to the YMCA and paying them for it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The other item I have, Mr. President, is a resolution authorizing participation in senior nutrition program and the grant for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $104,372. Ask for unanimous consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the senior nutrition program that's held at the two recreation centers in Gaston. One's Carver and the other one's Elliott Community Center. And it's primarily for nutritional meals for our seniors and it's a year-round program.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Okay, I think that's it. We got one. Yeah, I have two, Mr. President. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider both of them at this time and we'll act on them separately. One is approving the issues of a special events alcohol license and the other one is a resolution authorizing agreement with Creative Benefit Solutions. So I'd ask for unanimous consent for both.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
The first one is approving issues of a special event alcohol beverage license for the fish market. I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, we do special event alcohol beverage license and it's basically what it says is for a special event. This is the crawfish boil that they have every year and the event is from 12:00 PM to 12:00 midnight on Saturday, May the 12th. They set up out in the area out there and I guess for lack of a better word, just out by the rivers and all that stuff. But anyway, it's a big event, so every year they get a special event to, to do, special license in order to serve beer and the whole nine yards out of that area.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the next one is a resolution authorizing agreement with Creative Benefit Solutions. I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, at this time I'm going to call on Mr. Shane Ellison. Will you, will you be, yes, sir, if you don't mind. This is dealing with our package that we offer the city employees, retirement package and we'll let Shane explain why we got to do this one.
Yes, sir. Several months ago, when we entered into the initial contract with Creative Benefit Solutions, that contract only covered basically them looking at our employment and analyzing all the, all the numbers and coming back to us with a recommendation. As you all know, we decided to go ahead with the voluntary retirement incentive program or more commonly known as the buyout and you budgeted that at a million dollars. Well, this agreement is basically a continuation of Part A. This allows Creative Benefits to implement the program to, to look at all the employees that have signed up and, and assess how much money they will get and provide a, basically a buyout package for the employee, at which point then they will meet with all those employees and talk about how much they would receive in compensation. Also, as you know, we made a change in the, the healthcare for Medicare eligible retirees and this would also cover their work on that part of the project. We'll be meeting with those employees hopefully the end of next week. We're going to be sending a letter out on that so all the retirees can come in and we can explain what the changes were because we know there's been a lot of confusion and concern on the, on the part of the retirees and we want to make sure each one of those get the individual attention that they need so that they'll understand what we've done.
Okay. And I'm glad you, okay, I just want to make it clear that I know he's gotten calls or requests or talk and I have too and I'm pretty sure other council members, that the city employees are doing this. It's not, this is an independent company that's gone through this process and come up with these numbers and evaluating everything. So it's not being conducted by the mayor's office nor the council group or anyone like that. It's an independent agency. So I just want everybody to understand that because I, I've heard a lot of stuff about one or two city employees getting together, putting this project together and they're responsible for everything. And as Chairman of the Finance Committee, I got tagged as the guy who was behind all of it too, so I wish I was that brilliant.
It's a voluntary.
Well, I know it's a voluntary program, but I, if I had the sense enough to do all that, I'd be like this guy, going to other cities making the money. But anyway, just wanted to make sure everybody understands.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Clerk?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Remarks by the mayor and the council? Ben, you want to start?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank everybody for their participation in the Gaston Etowah County Patriots Association Golf Tournament yesterday. We sent everybody off with a good hot breakfast and brought them all in freezing to death after about 18 holes. Sturridge hadn't gotten over yet.
It was cold. Wind like a blew me away.
It did. That wind was blowing. I do want to say Rick Vaughn, our chairman, it happens to be in the audience, so welcome this morning, Rick. Job well done. Now, we raised some good money for some good benefits for our veterans and we're looking forward to handling that situation. I don't know whether I can do this or not, but I'm going to thank Jack's Restaurants, fine dining.
Fine dining.
For 160 biscuits. And I want to thank Dean's Sausage for 200 pre-cooked sausage patties that we all enjoyed and the Mountain Top Flea Market and everybody knows Janie Terrell. Janie brought us gravy and orange juice and what else, Rick?
Eggs.
Well, we bought the eggs. Now, let's, we had some participation in it. But anyway, y'all, from, from our heart to y'all, so thank you, thank you, thank you. It went over really well. We're going to spend the money frugally and for well causes. Appreciate it, we really do.
May I add something to that?
Very shortly. It's almost lunch.
I want to be very short. I have to speak about the lab system. I'd like to say this, I just left the pro shop and spoke with David Wright and he said based on the records from since we've been having this with the City of Gaston, that their golf course, one yesterday was the largest one we've ever had.
Good.
And it appears that we're going to be better off with this tournament financially than all those in the past. And it is thanks to people like you, the vacant officials, but not just Gaston, but other municipalities and the merchants in the City of Gaston because the golfers commented that we had door prices, something which most golf tournaments don't have. You don't have supply, a chance for it. You just sign up, register, then act the golf tournament and go back in and we're able to say that almost 40% of the golfers that participate in this golf tournament have got a door price. And that's very unusual and a lot of golf tournaments have a bad price. But the comments are favorable, looking forward to it next year and sorry we didn't get the message, Mayor. Looking forward to you being out there.
I was too, but I'm afraid to win might have hurt my game.
Yeah, yeah. If you played with a golf ball, it would have.
Believe it or not, the winner helps, helps rig the game.
Yes, sir.
helps rig the golf.
Absolutely.
That's what I like to see, the whole course. I like to see the course in the woods when I play it.
Well, they know some of the prettiest poison out there in there.
Well, Jenny didn't win anything and she was rather adamant about that. Billy won a guitar last year, he didn't win anything this year, he was adamant. Bill Sturridge could have cared less, so we balanced off. No. Debrick, I, I saw Debrick out there slamming bangs around. Yeah, we had a real good time.
Thanks, Ben. I appreciate you letting that back.
The banging and the slamming. But I saw you eating, so that was all right. Okay. We appreciate y'all.
Mayor?
I'd just like to say, how many seniors we have here today?
All of them.
That's what I thought. Okay. Good.
Oh, I thought you were talking about me involved.
Are y'all, oh, I didn't mean.
Really?
Excuse me. Debrick, excuse, excuse everybody except me and Debrick. Anyway, you wouldn't want to stay one more year, would you? I don't guess. Y'all ready? Y'all ready? Just bear down, stick to it, do what you want to do to be best for you and don't give up till you get to where you want to be, okay? Stay with it. You'll get there.
That'll work.
All right. Good luck.
I appreciate it, Mr. President. I do want to break on y'all guys, y'all have been really attentive today. Hadn't heard no noise out of you. Y'all really listened. I hope y'all have learned a lot here today. And we do want to thank Jack's and Alabama Sea today, they're the ones that furnished the biscuits and the sauces for us and Cochran's Bakery over on Albert Raines, they're the ones that gave the donuts. They do it every year for us. I appreciate those guys and appreciate all y'all coming. I hope you have a fun afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to congratulate all the senior, high school seniors who are here today and, and wish you well. It's good to see you. But... It's good to see you participate in this, in this great day, Student Government Day. And I noticed that several of them, you know, took the advice that we gave them this morning that is to ask questions, ask lots of questions, and we did have some questions asked up in up in the conference room prior to a pre-council meeting. So, and, and don't, don't forget to ask questions. When there's something that you don't fully understand, or something you have a question in your mind, don't be afraid to ask questions about it. Step up and ask questions, because the worst thing in the world is to walk away from a situation, you know, that you've been involved in, and, and you have a question, but you were afraid, and you didn't want to ask that question. Now, you don't know what you need to know about that situation, so ask questions. And I wish you all all success in, in your future endeavors. Gazzin City High School has some wonderful opportunities out there for job, for, for trade, for occupational training, so, and, and those of you going off to college, you know, just do well, and, and, and we will see you in the future back here in Gazzin. The next thing I want to say, that, yeah, the Patriots Association Golf Tournament was fun yesterday for those that played. We looked for Ben, you know, all over the golf course, we couldn't find him, so we figured he'd driven off in the woods over there somewhere, and waited until, waited until the tournament was over, and then drove on in and posted a score that we don't know where it came from. But we had fun. We had fun.
I really appreciate your confidence.
Oh, absolutely. Got all the confidence in the world, you know, and all the confidence. But it was fun, it was fun, and the Patriots really appreciate you supporting the organization like that, and I assure you that those funds that are raised by the, by this organization, by that organization, will be used dutifully, you know, to, to, to give homage to, to those patriots deemed, those persons deemed patriots in the city of Gazzin, Edelwau County. And the next thing is that Miller Heights, Miller Heights Improvement Association will meet on, on Monday night, next Monday night, the 30th, at New Hope Baptist Church on Miller Avenue. And I'm, I mean, we're encouraging all the, all, all of the residents on Miller and Lincoln Heights to be there for that meeting. They're gonna discuss an important topic that you will want to be involved in. The city will be represented there. City, city officials will be there at that meeting to get input from you on, on a very, very important topic. Thank you.
I, I just wanna echo, we, we certainly thrilled to have you young people here today, the seniors from, from our city high school. I hope you learned something about city government, and like Billy said, if you don't, if you have a question about something, ask it. We hope we've informed you on how our city government works. How many of you are, I don't know, all of you raise your hand, you're 18, most of you? How many are registered voters?
Good question.
Come on, come on.
You mean you should be?
How many are 18? It might be something that's not 18. Might be something that's not 18.
There's a few, most of them raised their hand that said they were 18 years old.
No, they said they were 18.
There's a lot of them.
How many is 18?
Okay. We got a few that's not registered, so go register, vote, and get, take part in your city government.
Thank you.
Again, I say welcome, and we've certainly enjoyed being with you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do wanna recognize Ms. Katie, and on another job well done, we appreciate it. Let's give her a hand. She does, you can tell by the applause, she does an outstanding job with these young people, and they appreciate it, and we definitely appreciate it. So, thanks once again. Do wanna recognize Chelsea James out there. You're getting to be old head at council meeting, so we appreciate you coming out again. And again, just thanks to, to all of you, as Councilman Harris mentioned earlier, you, you guys were very, very tuned in, and that's always important, because as you can tell, we have a lot of information to share, and it's just always meaningful for us if, if the young people appear to be tuned into it, so we appreciate it. Lot of good questions were asked upstairs, so I'll have a good report for you when I talk to your father later. I'll, I'll definitely have a good report. I didn't wanna embarrass him, so I'll just, I'll, I'll leave that name anonymous. So we're, we're excited about what lies ahead for the city of Gazzin and, and the future. You oftentimes hear me talk about our pipeline, and there not being enough young people in the pipeline for, for political office and leadership, so I'm encouraged when I see this kinda turn out. So, so again, keep up the good work. Just a couple of other things. My District Two meeting for East, for the, for this month will be at the East Gazzin Community Center on, on Thursday, on this Thursday, at 6:00 PM. And, and again, this will be the District Two meeting for this month, Thursday, at the East Gazzin Community Center. Do wanna send out a special appeal to, Chief Crane's gonna be there to support us. Do wanna send out a special appeal to the folks, to, to, those folks that live on Lay Street. We've had some traffic issues on Lay Street that, that he's gonna be able to speak to there, so I do wanna send out a special appeal to those folks to come out and, and attend that meeting. And, and lastly, do we have anyone here who's on the Berry, is, is the crawfish boil, is that the event, one of the fundraisers for the Berry, Berry Center? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure.
Yeah? Okay. All right. It is? Okay. All right. So, so for, for that reason, and, and just for the pure fact that it's an awesome event, I attended last year for the first time, and the weather was great. If you have not taken the opportunity to, to, to go out and enjoy that boardwalk area, you're missing it. We have a, you know, it's a wonderful, the city's done a great job in developing that area. It's right along the waterfront, I think. Last year's event coincided with the duck race. Yeah, coincided with the duck race, so I don't know if we'll have that luxury this year. But, but again, if you have not attended it, please do. You'll enjoy the food, you'll enjoy the, the environment, and it's just a, a good event each year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, somebody said a few minutes ago, earlier today, that 25 years we've been having Youth in Government Day. Brought on a long time. I think I've been around here all 25 of them. That's, that's the other problem.
You missed four.
Yeah, well, I mean, but I was here from the first 25, I mean, 25 years ago when they started. Shane, didn't you participate?
I did, in 95 or whatever.
Right. The mayor's assistant participated in Youth in Government Day in 95, or somewhere during that time.
I was not happy, as I remember, with the city attorney at that point. He said something out of line when I wanted to do so.
And now you're his-
The youth city attorney, that's, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought, I thought you was talking about this one. I, I was, I was gonna say, that's why you're so hard on Roger now, you're his boss, so you're hard on it. No. But we, we've had, I think, one city council member who participated in Youth in Government Day, so, you know, again, when I talked to y'all this morning, I was saying that I could see some future council members, mayors, and probably others, and that goes to show you that, you know, it, it is true. So we're just happy to have them here, and hopefully, we're gonna be seeing a lot of, out of our young people in the future participating in, in city government. And one last thing I want to talk about, we, we talked about it briefly, but, and that was, we had the resolution to deal with the cameras for the police officers. I know council members get calls constantly of situations we have involving our police department. We have a new chief, and I'm, I'm trying to give the new chief the benefit of the doubt and the time to deal with the issues down there. But we've got to change some attitudes in this city when it come down to police officers interacting with the public. And, and one of the ways I felt that we could do that is by requiring all those guys who go out there and, and come in contact with the public to have those cameras on and those recorders, 'cause see, I get those calls. As a matter of fact, Sunday evening, I'm in my den in my easy chair, and I get someone coming knocking on my door because there was an incident where officers were very nasty to a grandmother and a mother who tried to find out what was happening to their children. And, and, and I get sick and tired of having to deal with those type issues. If our police officers have cameras and recorders, then there won't be an issue as to who said what and who did what, 'cause it's being recorded and it's being kept up with. And, and that's why, you know, Mayor, we, we want to deal with this, we want to make sure every officer, 'cause it's for the protection of the officers as well as the protection of our citizens. And, and no money is too much for me as far as to spend to make sure that we protect our officers and we protect our citizens. We've just got too many things that are happening around this country. People don't have any confidence in, in government, law enforcement, the whole nine yards. I, I think that would put all of that to rest if we can say, well, Miss so-and-so, it didn't happen that way, 'cause we've got a recording, and that officer was within his rights. Or we can say, Miss so-and-so, based on that recording, the officer was not in his rights, or he didn't do whatever. That's why it's gonna be important that we outfit every officer with those cameras, and I'm hoping that the mayor's committed to do so. Go ahead on the order, I think we've ordered, what, 27, or however many? Okay. We're gonna make sure that all officers, so everybody will know that when you come in contact with a police officer, you need to be careful, too, with your mouth, 'cause it's gonna be recorded on TV. There's a TV camera, not just a, a, a audio, but a, audio and video, video camera that they're gonna be having. So we'll know who gonna be telling the truth from this point forward. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. That's all I have.
Mr. President, I would like to make an announcement, if I could, that I failed to make a while ago when I was speaking. You know, Gazzin's very fortunate to have a symphony orchestra in a town our size, and very few people have a symphony orchestra, and we have a fine one. We have, if you haven't heard them, tonight is their performance, and it's gonna be a patriotic theme tonight. It's city, it's the convention hall, it starts at 6 o'clock, so I encourage everybody to come out, you'll hear some great music. The King of Swings will also be playing in the latter part of it, so come out and support your symphony orchestra, and you'll have a wonderful evening of patriotic music. That's all I have. Thank you.
Y'all will have to figure out which one of these speeches was political and which one was not.
Mine was political. You don't have to figure it out. I'll let you know mine was.
Every one of them wants you vote, so.
I don't, they don't live in my district. I'll be putting me in jail. One lady out here.
I would hope that they would vote legally and not vote in your district, Ben, and I hope they don't vote for you.
And the key issue is to vote. Okay. That's the main thing. Vote, whether you vote for Ben or Grobbel or me or whoever, the main thing is that you vote for someone.
That's exactly right. I wanna announce a Neighborhood Watch meeting tonight at 5:00 PM at the Raymond Hill Center, that's down at Yer Brown School. Our new chief is gonna be there. We'll have some other folks there, so everybody in the district or anybody else who's interested, we would appreciate to have you. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting's adjourned.